This morning, are we ready?
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call the Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Rolle, may I have a roll call, please?
Supervisor Giomi. Supervisor Jones. Supervisor Shutey.
Here.
Supervisor White. Mayor Bagwell.
Here.
A Coram is present.
Thank you. We're going to go to item number three on our agenda, and I think new. Have you said the blessing before?
No.
Oh, well, come on up. We have Pastor Bowman from the Hilltop Community Church, and please turn the mic on.
There we go. Almighty God, we acknowledge the blessing it is to call Carson City home. We're grateful for such dedicated leaders as our mayor and each Board of Supervisors member. We ask that you'd give them the wisdom and lead them in the oneness of mind they need to make the decisions that lie before them today for the good of the community. May they see the importance of each decision, whether big or small, to the individuals those decisions affect and to the community as a whole. We also ask that you'd give them confidence in you so they can withstand the inevitable criticism they will receive for nearly any decision. Protect their families and bless their time together as they spend much time caring for the city. May today be another day when they're able to leave the positive mark on Carson City they desire to do. We ask this in the name of the One who gives life and wisdom when we ask, the Lord Jesus. Amen.
Thank you so very much. It's nice to have you. I hope we see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Haskins, will you lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Haskins. Okay, we're going to move to the public comment period, and the public is reminded that to limit their comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone for public comment?
We have three callers on the line. Caller, it's your turn for public comment. After the beeps, please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is James Underwood, and I'd like to make a public comment about Desi Navarro.
Go ahead, Mr. Underwood.
So, two weeks ago, thank you very much, two weeks ago, we received the devastating news that our coworker, Desi Navarro, had passed away. To me, two weeks feels like two months with all of the emotions and after effects from his loss. I can only imagine the impact this has had on his family, and our thoughts and prayers continue to go out to them. I was Desi's coworker and indirect supervisor, and I knew him for three years, which is a short time compared to many in the city. But in that time, I grew to know Desi and liked him very much. We didn't always get along perfectly. He could be a bit stubborn, and so could I. He also didn't like to be told what to do. But we learned to appreciate each other and worked well together. Desi grew up in Carson City and loved working for the city. He was passionate about the things he believed in and the people he cared about. You could hear his voice get lower and a bit of moisture buildup in his eyes at times. His passion was obvious. Give him a little support for his ideas or get him on board with your ideas, and he was unstoppable. Desi's loss is felt throughout the city and especially within our IT department. How he contributed is almost so obvious in his absence, where the rest of us pick up the pieces. Let us remember his smiling face, his positive attitude, and his eagerness to help. His time with us will have a lasting impact on Carson City, and he will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood.
Thank you.
We concur. Do I have another caller on?
Yes, I have another caller. Caller, it's your turn for public comment. After the beeps, please state your name for the record.
Good morning, this is Krista Leach.
Good morning, Krista.
First of all, I'd like to, I would like to send condolences regarding Desi Navarro. I'm very sorry to hear that. As you know, I am calling in about the zoning map amendment, which is Agenda Item 13A. I trust that you have all received and read my email regarding the Attorney General's opinion on NRS 278.250, and that the courts have not perceived the legislative intent of the statute to require strict conformity between master plans and zoning ordinances. Furthermore, I have some questions pertaining to the material facts I keep bringing up, which in my opinion have not been addressed yet. Number one, why are those of us on Center Drive not being afforded a gradual transition from our low-density residential neighborhood to the high-density development of the Silverview Town Homes as afforded to the Schultz Ranch specific plan area in the master plan? That sets the precedent and states that a "variety of lot sizes shall be provided to allow for a gradual transition in density between existing one-acre lots and the more urban development pattern permitted and to encourage a diversity of housing types." Number two, has research been done by city staff into what was contemplated and mandated for the South Point subdivision? If yes, what were the findings? If no, why not? What was mandated then is very material to the decision you are ultimately making today. Number three, has research been done by city staff as to the irregularities Mike Tancheck had found regarding the change from SF-1A to SF-21 on the west side of Center Drive? And finally, number four, what is the hurry in approving the zoning map amendment? Later on today, you will be creating a new zoning subcommittee. Although I have been informed that this new subcommittee will only be addressing commercial area land uses, that is not at all clear in the staff report. The staff report notes that it is "an objective of the Board of Supervisors to promote transparent seen government and afford to those members of the public whose real property may be directly affected by zoning and development standards a defined forum in which to provide input for consideration before the amendment of existing or adoption of new city policies affecting land use." Our neighborhood and all of the other transition or friction zone neighborhoods are very much in need of that. Therefore, I again respectfully request that you deny or at least continue the zoning map amendment to allow your staff and the zoning subcommittee to do the research and due diligence that we all deserve to determine consistent ways to treat these transitional areas.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. Do I have another caller on the line?
Yes. Caller, it's your turn for public comment. After the beeps, please state your name for the record.
Yep, this is Michael Tancheck again. I'm Krista Leach's cohort, and I want to support, you know, I support what she said. I also support the late filed comments about Andrew Swan. I filed some comments as well. They're on the agenda as late filed. Not going to go through the whole thing, just to hit a couple, a few of the bullet points. Due to the lack of a clear transition zones on both Center and Clearview Drive, the proposed conversion of border crossing zoning to SF-6 adjacent to two SF-21 and two SF-1A zoning districts does not comply with Title 18 of the Carson City Municipal Code. The zoning of the entire border crossing parcel of SF-6 is arbitrary and capricious because it's inconsistent with the established policy and practice of both the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission for properties on the west side of Center Drive. Failing to adequately consider reasonable alternative recommendations from the surrounding residents is a clear abuse of discretion by both the Commission and the Board. Because both the Commission and the Board failed to consider all the relevant evidence and relied on incorrect and incomplete information prior to making the decision to approve the zone change, there has been a clear error of judgment. Changing the zoning would allow the developer to move forward with a project that is not in substantial compliance with the goals, policies, and action programs of the Carson City Master Plan. The Board has failed to consider an important aspect of the issue, and that is the close connection between Silverview Town Homes and border crossing. In order to approve a zoning map amendment, the Board of Supervisors makes several fundamental findings of fact. I objected to several of the required findings and comments filed prior to February 18th, 2021 board meeting, and in incorporating them by reference. Also, in my notes, I, my signature date was February 16th, 2021. It should have been March 16th. I'm sorry about that error. I do want to kind of commend Supervisor Giomi. I know the mayor said that everybody read all the documentation that was filed, but he seems to be the only one that noticed that I would be confronted by two houses across the street from myself, no matter how this thing turned out. And that dates all the way back to June of last year. It's, water is still an issue. It's still an issue for me, and Carson City's development standard, 14.1.10, says this about retention basins, and that is that it poses a hazard to city groundwater resources through possible contamination. And that's been an issue that I brought up from the beginning, and from what I can tell that Mr. Pate has been able to come up with is, well, we don't have a standard for distance between wells and retention basins. So that being said, I want to thank you guys for your time and hope you have a decent meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tancheck. Do we have any more public comment?
There are no callers at this time.
Thank you. And we will move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is approval of the minutes of February 18th. We have two corrections submitted for, on page nine, purpose of, in quotation marks, comma, and on page 18, first paragraph at the end, change the word improve. Do you have any further corrections? No, then I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from the February 18, 2021 meeting with the grammatical changes right into the record.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. We're going to move on to our consent agenda. Does any member have an item they wish to be pulled, discussed? Then I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of Item 7A, 8A, 9A, period.
I second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Giomi and then second by Supervisor Shutey to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Then we're on Item 11A. This is our discussion on our directives and issues on COVID. Ms. Akers?
Good morning. Thank you for putting us in the morning. That kind of helps with our planning of our day with changes that happen rapidly in our office. So as far as COVID cases, the, from February 28 to March 13, that two-week period, there have been 94 confirmed COVID cases. This is 37% of all the Quad County cases. That was, is a 16% decrease from the following two weeks. And the daily cases reported based on a seven-day average over this two-week period is five. We've had five case investigations completed within the schools within that two-week period. And then from our exposure investigations, 33% were exposed in the community, 37% were exposed to someone in their household that had tested positive. And our three highest is, like I said, the community, household, and workforce. We've had four long-term care facilities in Carson City, which is a significant reduction from the last two weeks. And then, anybody have any questions on those stats? Okay. And as far as the vaccines, we do have three events here in Carson City, one tomorrow, Saturday, and then the 23rd, and as of right now, they're all full. They had some openings yesterday, so, but they are full now. We will continue to open events as we get more vaccine. I'm sure all of you heard the governor's press conference yesterday, so we will be working to comply with that. And I just want to remind people that doctors' offices around the area are vaccinating, as well as our local federally qualified house center, and our pharmacies, Walgreens, and Walmart. So, any questions?
What's your distribution on vaccine? Are you getting more vaccine all the time?
We're, we've been slightly giving, getting more that's coming into the area. A thing for us that has changed is, you know, now the providers are within the mix. So there will be a distribution to the providers who are also helping us, and then we will get our allocation.
So what is your allocation? 4,000, 5,000?
It depends on the week. It's hard to say.
It looks like, just from reports at the state level, that we're now in our Quad area and stuff, we're moving up to about, you know, 6,500 vaccines. But again, varying to all different vendors and stuff, so.
Yeah, you've got the federally allocation of that, that we really, yeah, prior to that report that I was able to see, we had not had that information, and providers are now getting a direct allocation from the state. So, which is a good thing, you know, they.
The more vaccine, the better.
Yeah, and we'll just continue and try and get as much as we can and get it into the arms as quickly as we can.
Okay, Mr. Giomi?
Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, ask people to please, if you make appointments in multiple places, or if you have to cancel, please cancel, because it can be a struggle to find people at the last minute to roll out and put needles in arms, so. And those vaccines, once they're open, I don't know about Johnson &amp; Johnson, I haven't worked with that yet, but Moderna, once you open the vial, you got to finish it, can't move it. So it's really important, if you could just touch on that, Nikki, that if you can't make it, call as soon as you know.
Exactly.
Don't know, call no show.
Yes, and that, that also helps us get the public vaccinated as fast as possible, because if there's somebody that has an appointment that has not canceled it, that takes the place of somebody else. And so that is a very important point. And I also would like to highlight that our Homebound program has started, so we've got nurses that are going into homes to vaccinate those individuals that cannot leave their homes.
So I have a general question. I've gotten a lot of phone calls on large gatherings. Right now, it's 250, and just in general, our thoughts that we would at least wait a month before we'd make any decisions on those exceeding 250 for the planning purposes, unless, I see us gradually moving on large gatherings, unless any of you have a different direction you'd like us to have staff do, but that they wouldn't come back to us and maybe late June, we'd make a decision on large gatherings, you know, that we would do it slowly. Anybody have a different opinion than that?
You're saying follow the governor's guidelines?
We, after May 1st, have to make our own guidelines, and we've already.
I'm talking till May 1st.
May 1st, and we already made the decisions on that, but the one issue that's outstanding is the large gatherings. We said we were going to stick to the 250 and under, but people are trying to do their planning for events, and so I just think we wouldn't be making any decisions until the end of June if we were going to open it up to greater than 250. I just want to help them plan so they're not making their events in June that are 1,000 people, that they realize that we won't make that decision until after we see what happens. We need data.
Yeah, I think under the circumstances, it's important to do this gradually. Again, we don't want to open up and then have to turn around and close. So I think being mindful of that, a gradual approach is more appropriate.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
You know, I would just add that I think we can be, I think we can be pretty nimble with that. Maybe we don't wait till the end of June, maybe by the end of May, with the changes that the governor just made in terms of who is eligible for vaccines starting April 5th. It's essentially everybody. And maybe we sort of start to track that number.
Right.
You know, how many vaccines have we given in the community? Because that, that may be a situation where, to Lisa's point, you know, by the end of May, maybe we're at 40 or 50% of our population, and we can raise that number in terms of allowing more people, particularly in an outside event, let's say, like, like the Brew Fest, which we know is kind of scheduled for August.
East of downtown.
Or Taste of Downtown. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Hicks?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think we may have just touched on it with Supervisor Giomi's comment, but I just wanted to clarify for the record, when we are talking about the 250 capacity on large gatherings, is that inside and outside for large events?
Yes, the, the inside ones would be though only if their particular facility, you know, allows for it, because I think you can do 190 to fit inside the Fandango Ballroom that meets social distancing, and, you know, they still have to meet all the other requirements, but. Yes, thank you. And Supervisor White?
I, I don't have any interest in complying with or enforcing the governor's mandates, in particular, when it comes to those activities within private property.
Thank you. Okay, anybody have any other questions for Ms. Akers, or do you have more comment?
I appreciate the comments about taking this slow. I think as your health director, I really want to be a little cautious, because I don't want to go back to where we were at. And we, yes, so the vaccines have been open to everybody, but it still depends on how much we get in the area. And, you know, like I had said, we've got a lot of providers that are helping with that, but it does take us some time. So, so I really do appreciate that.
Thank you. Further comments? I don't see any further comments. Thank you so much, and keep up the great work. I know your staff's exhausted, but we're going to get there. Something like that, yeah. Thank you again so much. Okay, we're going to move on. I'll give her just a moment in case. Item 12A, which deals with the second reading on Bill Number 103 and ordinance for Title 12 and Title 18 Appendix of the Code to establish provisions on our, implementing our low-impact development standards. Mr. Schultz, are you taking that, or Ms. Stuckey? And it's solely the question, did we have any additional public comment or any corrections needed between first and second reading?
Darren Schultz, Public Works Director, for the record. No, we have had no comments. We've had no changes since the first reading.
Okay. But I don't see any questions. I'll accept a motion. Mr. White?
I move to adopt on second reading, Bill Number 103, Ordinance Number 2021-3.
I have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no. Motion carried. Thank you for great work. And I really want to thank the community on that, too, for their efforts to work together. Okay, we're going to move on to Item 13A, discussion and possible action on the second reading for Bill Number 104. Is this going to be Ms. Ferris or Ms. Sullivan? And then I'll get yours. And while we're getting staff, Mr. Giomi, do you have a disclosure?
I do. NRS 281A-420, dot 420, requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. Item 13A is on a proposed ordinance for a zoning map amendment. One of the members of the partnership, which is the applicant requesting the item, is Rob McFadden. Mr. McFadden was previously my campaign treasurer when I ran for my current supervisor seat. He no longer serves in that capacity, and I have no expectation at this time that he will have further involvement in my future campaigns, if any. Mr. McFadden is a personal acquaintance of mine, and we have occasionally but perhaps rarely socialized with each other. However, I do not have a commitment in a private capacity to the interests of Mr. McFadden, and neither my previous campaign relationship or current acquaintance with him affects the independence of my judgment and consideration of this agenda item. In making this disclosure for the purpose of full transparency, I realize that there may be an issue of optics. However, Nevada law governs, governing ethics in government specifically provide that it is the public policy of this state to favor the right of a public officer to perform the duties for which the officer was elected and to vote or otherwise act on a matter so long as that officer makes the proper disclosure. Under state law, abstention is required only in clear cases where the independence of judgment is materially effective. Affected. I have carefully considered my relationship with Mr. McFadden, and I'm confident that my independence of judgment is not materially affected. I'm also mindful of my duties and obligations to the community as elected member of this board, and take very seriously my responsibility to exercise my vote when appropriate. Finally, I have conferred with Board Counsel and have been clearly advised that I am not required to abstain under the circumstances. For these reasons, I will be voting on this matter.
Thank you. Ms. Ferris, thank you so much. I want to start with, staff has had a chance to read all of the public comments and heard the public comments this morning.
That's correct.
Is there anything in any of the comments that has given staff pause to suggest that a change is needed in any of the approvals?
No, I believe the findings can still be made for the zoning map amendment.
Okay. Do I have questions from board members? I don't see any. Oh, sorry. Ms. Shutey?
Not so much a question, but a statement, so I don't know if right now is the time for that.
Absolutely.
Okay. This has been incredibly difficult, and I've, I've reached out to different people. I've spoken to neighbors, I've spoken to staff, and I think this morning's prayer was perfect. I appreciate any wisdom in terms of how to make a decision that really is, is the right decision in, in the face of not being able to make everyone happy. As I have researched the master plan and the zoning, early on, I really was leaning one way, and the more I was reading, it led me to the decision I'll be making. Ultimately, it falls back to the three points of the finding for the zoning map amendment and being consistent with that, that the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with and supports the goals and policies of the master plan. Substantial does not mean complete. And therefore, while there are some areas of this that are inconsistent perhaps with what was zoned at, just north in South Point, it is in substantial compliance for the master plan in terms of that transition area. That the proposed amendment will provide for land use compatible with existing adjacent land uses and will not have detrimental impacts to other properties in the vicinity. This is where it gets a little complicated. But detrimental, again, that is, that is of the, you know, opinion of whoever you asked, ask 10 people, and they'll have 10 different answers. But in terms of infrastructure, in terms of roads, in terms of availability for police fire, in terms of the north being single-family 6,000, the west being mixed-use commercial, the east being single-family one acre, and the south being mixed, both of single-family one acre and single-family 6,000, it, there isn't that detrimental impact. There is an impact for sure, but I think what is being presented is the most balanced under the circumstances, which then leads to that the proposed amendment will not negatively impact exist. impact existing or planned public services or facilities and will not adversely impact the public health, safety, and welfare. That is a part that we also have to be mindful of, and it doesn't impact public health, safety, and welfare. On the contrary, I think it helps promote community, our Carson City community, and the availability of housing and opportunities for people who work in Carson City to live in Carson City in a way that has taken into account the concerns of the neighbors. If this were 1-acre properties, then there would still be at least two driveways facing Center Drive if it were zoned along the west side of the property at 1 acre. Again, you have those properties. To have the sides of two homes, the way it's said, laid out, is in some ways less impactful, although I know with the road, that creates another issue. But we're not talking hundreds of homes here, we're talking 28. So I just wanted to put that on the record, and I'm sure you can hear through my voice and my heart that I'm not being capricious, I'm not taking this lightly. If I had my way, Carson City would be smaller, and yet I'm so grateful for this beautiful community and the resources that we have, and the fact that with growth comes our wonderful medical system and our shopping and our restaurants and our beautiful downtown, and it really is a destination. So thank you for the time. I just feel that this is really important.
Thank you, Ms. Shutey. Does anyone else want to comment? Supervisor Giomi?
Yeah, I just, I just want to compliment Supervisor Shutey. I think it was a well-stated, objective look at things, and, you know, you articulated, I think, what all of us go through in our minds when we approve subdivisions tentatively or zoning changes like this. You know, none of us up here take it lightly in the two and a half years I've been here and the seven and a half or eight or 52 years Lori's been here, whatever it is. You know, we don't, we don't take these requests lightly, and we don't just rubber-stamp them. We do do our homework, and you articulated that very well, so thank you.
I think I just want to add for the listeners that we take public comments seriously. We have staff do the research for the items that you bring up, and I'm sorry that the reality is you're not getting the result that you want, and I understand and have empathy for that, but we have to do the job of reviewing each project on its face. You had a question on the connection between the two property owners. I don't think that it matters. Each parcel or each decision is unique unto itself, and we use those rules and then look at surrounding properties. The ownership of two properties is not something in code that is utilized for us to make a decision, and so I wanted that on the record since it was a question that you asked of us also. Then you also had a question indicating that you thought we had an abuse of discretion. The issue here is it is our discretion and our independent reviews of the situations, which I think the Planning Commission did, and this board has done, and it has had several hearings, and I've also asked staff if there was any new evidence that has been brought forward that would make us take a different direction. The property could have more homes than what is allowed. I mean, they're only doing 28, and they could have, what, 39? They could have more homes. So to say that the property owner did not listen to the public, I don't think that's accurate either. They just didn't meet what you wanted. And so I just want to put that on the record, that I don't think there's any abuse of discretion, and I thank the other members of the board for independently looking at this, because that's what it's all about, is we're each independently reviewing the project. So, we're Supervisor Jones.
I would just like to add to that, that I trust our staff, and I feel that the information they gave us was accurate and relative, and I appreciate it. I want that to be on record, too. Our staff provided great input on this, to me.
Okay. Seeing no other raised hands, I will accept a motion.
I move to adopt on second reading, Bill Number 104, Ordinance Number 2021-4.
And a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no.
No.
Let the record reflect, the vote was four yeses, one no by Supervisor White. Thank you. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 13B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Proposed Order of Abandonment for the abandonment of a portion of a public right-of-way totaling approximately .39 acres along the south side of Beverly Drive. Does any members of the board have a question? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Supervisor White?
I move to approve the order of abandonment based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the order.
Good.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carried. Thank you. We're going to move to Agenda Item 14A, which is Discussion and Action to Appoint a Member to the Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority. Who is going to be first? Good morning. Are you Deborah? Okay.
Oh, yes. Thank you. It's easier for the long room. That's great, right there. Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds has left. Okay. Well, good morning. If you'd state your name for the record, please.
Debbie Billings.
Okay. Have you gone through this process before?
Nope. First time.
First time. Okay, so what's going to happen is we're going to each ask you a series of questions, then we'll interview the other candidate, and then we'll be making a decision today. And you're welcome to stay and listen to the responses of the other ones since you're first.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So I'd like to start off with you giving us a little bit about the importance that you think this position is to the community and what you hope to achieve if you were to get the position.
So when I was first approached to come interview, I started kind of, I looked at the website and the things that were going on, and I do have a business, Downtown Carson City. So I love the downtown area, the downtown feel, I love all the events that we do. So I really wanted to be a part of that. My history has given me a chance to live in all kinds of different small towns, and I like that. I like the feeling. I like the warmth. I like the outdoor stuff. I like the music, the art, the culture, all of that. That's kind of just right up my alley, what I've done my whole life, so.
Great. Thank you. We're going to do something unique, and we're going to go the opposite direction this meeting. Last time, we went the other way. Ms. Shutey? Yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. One of the roles of, oh, hello, by the way. And thank you for applying. One of the roles of this committee is to establish Carson City as a visitor destination. What do you feel brings visitors to Carson, and how might we celebrate these strengths to build on these tourism opportunities?
So I think Carson City being so diverse, that it has not only all the outdoor activities, you know, we're so close to Lake Tahoe, and just recently with what's been going on, I have benefited from the Carson side of the lake being closed down, but the Nevada side open, so I have gotten, in my business, many clients coming down the hill. Also, the cost of staying at Lake Tahoe is very expensive, so they can stay down here and get to the lake very easily. So you've got the outdoor activities that are, that are very, you know, people like to ride the rim trail and go on the lake, and then we've got all the trails down here to hike. That's huge. I really love music. I teach music, so music's kind of my thing. I go to several concerts and festivals, you know, those type things is kind of what I do. For my fun, I like to go places and see places. I also like just to explore the area, the town, the history. And I grew up in Atlanta, or north of Atlanta, in a small little town. We had extensive historical Native American history, the Civil War history, all these things that you could go and see, the homes and the museums. And every place I've lived since then, I've had the same type, I think I've always lived in tourist towns, so, you know, so the exploring of the cities. So for people, I think just letting them know, letting them know how close to Tahoe we are, how close to Reno we are, all the things that we have to offer here.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Well, first of all, I think I'm your neighbor.
You are my neighbor.
He recognizes you.
Yep.
So, thank you for applying. This is a huge marketing position. I view the Carson Tourism Authority as a marketing. How do you view us to market that, Carson City specifically?
Right. I have been trained in old-school marketing, if you will, in print. I've worked for a magazine company before, but right now, the social media is where it's at. I see all of your Instagram posts, the Facebook post. That is how I am getting most of my business, is the social media. I love the ones with the healthy people outside and smiling and happy, but I do believe right now, actually for all three of my businesses, social media is where we're getting, we're getting all of our customers from. So.
Mr. White?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being willing to work your way through this inquisition. So what do you think is the single most important thing that the Convention and Tourism Authority does, and what actions will you take to reach that goal?
I think the most important, the most important thing, I think, would be education on what we have here. When I first moved to Carson City, I did not know, I did not know what Carson City had. I've lived in Atlanta, Florida, Aspen, Colorado, Redstone, Colorado, Palm Springs, Rancho Margaritas. I mean, I've lived all over the country, and I had no idea what Carson City had until I got here. So if we could get the message out of all the different neat things that we have here, I think that would be, that would be what we should focus on. Because again, I've lived coast-to-coast in this country, all over the place, and I really, when I moved here, I was like, where are we going? You know, I was like, what are we going to do there? So I do think that education of all the things that we have would be very important.
Thank you.
Mr. White? I'm, no, sorry. Mr. White just went. Thank you, Mr. White. Supervisor Giomi?
Thank you. Debbie, what cultural or tourism event or attraction do you think is our best asset? And which event or attraction, in your mind, needs the most work to improve?
I do personally enjoy the wine walk that we do, mostly because I've participated in it, and I know the most about that one. For the improvement, that's a tough one. We haven't had any for a while, so I have enjoyed the Taste of Downtown. That one was wonderful. I don't know, maybe that one, we could expand a little bit more. I did want more restaurants when I was there. More people involved, more things to do.
Thank you so much. So we're going to interview Mr. Reynolds now, and again, you're welcome to stay and listen to his answers, and then we'll be making our decision, and no matter what, thank you so much for applying.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Good morning. For the record, Steve Reynolds of Carson City.
He knew to do that. He's done a lot of testimonies before, and you're already familiar with the process of what we do. We're just each going to go through a series of questions.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll start off with, what is, what do you hope to achieve if we appoint you to this position?
I've been involved with the Visitor Bureau off and on for about 27 years, and one of the concerns that I've had is that we make sure and spend enough of our effort and enough of our energy to actually reach the audience that might come here. You know, in past years, at times, we've spent perhaps valuable and worthwhile money on designing things, on creating things, but I've often questioned whether we spend enough money on making sure that those designs actually got in front of audiences to the level that they should. So one of the things that I would watch for is make sure that we've, you know, that we've reached out as much as we can with the budget that's available.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Shutey?
Pardon?
Supervisor Shutey's going to ask the next question.
Hello, welcome, and thank you so much for applying. One of the roles of this committee is to establish Carson City as a visitor destination. What do you feel brings visitors to Carson City, and how might we celebrate these strengths to build on these tourism opportunities?
We're not a community that has one or two overwhelming attractions. It's not, we have some very attractive things. We're at the State Capitol, we have a museum, we have a mint, we're close to Lake Tahoe. It's easy to get to open country from here, but, you know, there's really no one overwhelming thing. It's that collection that makes things interesting. I think it's been shown, and I think into the future, the proven method to get people to Carson City reasonably to enjoy themselves here is to have cooperative events that go along with these attractions. Yes, there's a number of people out there that'd be happy to visit the prison and, you know, like visiting prisons, but it's not a large percentage of the total number of people out there. You know, we won't survive just inviting prison visitors. When we combine, when you combine all that we do have to offer with an event like the bicycle races that have happened, then we have a lot to offer, and the people that come here once are quite likely to come back again. So I think that using all of our attractions and combining that with, as they say, events is probably the most effective way to communicate. Thank you.
Supervisor Jones?
Good morning, Steve. Marketing is a tough business, as you know, and what do you feel is the best method of marketing Carson City?
The relative inexpensive cost factor of marketing on the internet is just an unquestionable, it's a heck of a resource. And having the people working for you or people under contract with you understand how to use that well is very important to getting the message out. Going back to what I mentioned about events, on the internet, the internet is an outstanding catalog for people to look up things that they've already decided they're interested in. It's not that good of a medium to force information at people that they're not already thinking of. So using other media, using mail, getting out and some of the So using other media, using mail, getting out and some of the, you know, those are things worth considering. Unfortunately, we've also seen that, uh, we've also seen that the costs of using, you know, what we used to call regular mass media have increased significantly. So you always have to judge, is that the best, you know? Can we make good buys out there to support the, uh, you know, the social media, the internet advertising that's done? Or, you know, the, again, getting back to what I mentioned earlier, you know, these once a year, twice a year, once every couple of year events. If I'm interested in mountain biking, I'm going to pay attention, you know, in competing in it. I'm going to pay attention to the fact that, you know, there's a heck of an event here. Maybe I want to go to it. We have other events through the years that could be combined in the same way to push out attention to our website and our social media advertising.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor White?
Morning, Steve.
Great.
What in your mind is the single most important thing that the CTA does? And what actions will you take to accomplish that goal? I'm going to go back to, you know, something I mentioned before. Um, what are you spending your money for? Are you spending your money to reach potential visitors? Is the budget in a, or with interesting things? Or is it being spent on, on busy work or things that maybe don't make that much of a difference? It's, uh, you know, this is an amount, marketing and advertising endeavor. And I think, um, Joel had pointed out very well in the past that, you know, you measure it by people that you've brought to the community. So again, money and effort against people who have a potential of coming to Carson City, I think is the, the key thing that I can watch over.
Supervisor Giomi?
Hi, Steve. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Um, what cultural or tourism event or attraction is our best asset? And which event or attraction needs the most work to improve?
So he's interesting with questions regarding specifics because I don't think that we have any one specific thing in either of those areas. Um, I think our, our nearness to outdoor attractions that people know, uh, and are already aware of, such as Lake Tahoe, such as, uh, you know, as I brought up, mountain biking, um, the fact that we're known within certain circles like, you know, regional softball, regional, uh, regional soccer, things like that have a lot of value. One of the key values that we have is that we're a community that if you visit here, we're very comfortable for families. Families may not be pleased at going to a Reno where as busy traffic is in going to a Spark. So, um, we can depend on the fact that, you know, we're a nice hometown community and that passes over to people, the families that can come to visit. Um, the one, the, the areas that will need the most work on are reestablishing the events that happen here. And not only for businesses, for organizations, but for communities and events. The lessening of this pandemic is not going to cure, is not going to, you know, just because restrictions are backed off, it's not going to automatically make people just, most people are not going to say, oh, I've got to get out and I've got to get back to Carson City or get back to traveling. There's a lot of question out there if you read about it. And we're going to have to work hard to put the events that we do have here back in front of people and perhaps communicate that, uh, you know, you're better off being here than in a big city trying to, you know, trying to do your travels. Thank you.
Okay. So now's the time the, uh, board has to, uh, make the difficult decision when we have two superb candidates. And again, thank both of you for coming. Does anyone want to, uh, I could do this to you. We went in the order, so Supervisor Shute, do you have a preference? Oh, your, your points? Yeah. It's okay. Is anyone ready to, uh, say who they'd like? Mr. Jones?
I will. You both gave great responses. Uh, I think the one that I really like is when you've mentioned families, Steve. That, that's very important. And I think that's kind of the image that we've, we've wanted to portray in Carson City in addition to all the other events. Uh, and I don't want you to be discouraged because I'm not going to recommend you. I hope you apply in the future. I mean that sincerely. But I move to approve Steve Reynolds for a two-year term.
Anybody, anybody want to second that? Or just, you can, you can get a second and then we go to this, then we go to discussion.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay. On discussion, Mr. White?
So for me, uh, this is a really hard decision because I believe that we really need to have a good mix of new people as well as people that have been around for a long time. And we have, um, a new person today that's trying to get involved. On, on the other hand, uh, with Steve, we have a very proven track record of solid decision making as, as well as, um, his willingness to embrace new ideas that a newcomer would, would bring along. Um, it's pretty difficult, uh, for this particular decision when I generally favor the new blood because I think it, it puts a vitality there. But in this particular case, I think with Steve's proven track record, I would have to, to go with Steve.
Supervisor Shute?
Um, thank you. Uh, you know, I agree with both. And boy, I, I really would love to recommend both. Um, the key word for me really was that, the collection, the combining the opportunities of events in terms of acknowledging that, for example, the, the bicycle racing and then tying that into other events and other opportunities. And I, you know, that's what really keeps people in the community for a longer stay. Um, that said, Deborah, I, I really hope that you stay involved and I would love it if during public comment, that, that you offer and share ideas just because, just like Supervisor White said, you know, the new ideas and when you talked about, uh, your marketing is your background and, and, uh, you know, those actions to reach the goal and, um, getting the message out, we absolutely, absolutely can benefit from that. Um, so while I am going to vote for Mr. Reynolds, um, it was about half a point. So.
Okay. And if there's no further discussion, oh, Supervisor Giomi?
Yeah, I just, just wanted to say that that pretty much makes me irrelevant.
Yeah.
As Supervisor Bonkowski used to say.
Yeah, we're out.
But, but I, I would like to thank both of you for applying because, uh, I, I continue to be amazed at the quality of people we get who put their names in to fill roles that, that don't bring them anything but, but give of themselves for this community. So thank you both for that. Um, Steve, I will say that, uh, as this board's representative on the CTA, um, a lot of the things you mentioned in terms of spending money wisely and measuring where that money is spent and having some scientifis, some science behind it and some research behind it is exactly what we've been doing over the last two years. So, um, as we spend money now, it is in those markets that we have proven to our, ourselves, our body are, are the ones that will be coming here anyway and not spending it in a spot where, um, we don't get any return on that investment. So, um, I appreciated your input there because it's exactly what the CTA has been doing. So that's my final comment. And to Debbie, thank you so much for putting yourself out there.
Okay. So again, I, I can't only echo how much we appreciate even the fact that you come forward and are interviewed in a public setting and, and to have to, you know, have to do that in front of everyone, but, uh, you're a wonderful addition to our community. And as everyone has said, um, I think we'd be very fortunate if you continue to look at avenues and, uh, apply again. Don't, sometimes it takes two or three times, but we like to see faces again and again. So come back. Um, so all of those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Uh, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Uh, we have high expectations. No, no pressure, just high expectations. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to item 15A. Uh, this is for discussion and possible action regarding the proposed acceptance of a FAA grant award in the amount of 23,000 to the Carson City Airport under the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. Does any member have a question? Yes? Question or motion?
A question, not a motion.
Question. Mr. Moen, you're on the line.
Hi, Kenny, you there?
I am. Good morning.
I, can I just, I, I mean, um, the use of the money appeared a little esoteric in here to me. Can you articulate what the money's going to be used for?
Well, with like the CARES Act grant we received last year, we used it to offset expenses incurred by the airport. And when the federal government instituted this relief act for airports, it was to augment lost revenue. As you know, that, um, commercial service airports have experienced a much different impact than general aviation airports like Carson City that are, uh, relying on revenues from ground car facilities, concessions, passenger facility charges, et cetera. And a lot of our expenses are fixed, or a lot of our revenue is fixed in the form of leases and those type of, um, revenue streams, the personal property taxes. Um, the revenue that we are impacted on are those that are subject to, uh, issues like purchases of fuel and whatnot. So in the latest legislation, there was a, just passed, uh, they approved a third of the amount of the money that airports received prior to, uh, the prior grant, which was 69,000. So we got 23,000 appropriated. It is, it's not something that we apply for. The FAA basically sent us an application to accept it. And so if we choose to use it for offset of debt where we don't have, it can also be utilized for that. It can be used, utilized for other expenses related to, uh, pandemic pathogens and that sort of thing. Those are really not, um, issues that we're concerned about. So essentially it's monies that can come to the airport. We can receive them by offsetting our, our operating expenses. And then the monies that we would have otherwise spent on that could be utilized for like capital purchases and earmarks of that nature.
Thank you.
So as the airport, we've decided that, uh, the easiest way to receive that is to offset against operating expenses, then utilize it for, uh, capital improvements and/or capital equipment purchases.
Thank you. To, is there any other questions? Not, I'll accept a motion.
Go ahead. I made the last.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. I move to accept the grant as presented and to authorize the execution of any documents as needed to receive the funds on behalf of the Carson City Airport Authority.
I have a motion and acceptance, uh, motion and a second to accept the grant. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to item 15B, um, dealing with a proposed option lease and easement agreement with the Carson City Airport and T-Mobile West. Mr. Moen, did you want to take us through any changes, updates, or comments?
Thank you, Mayor Bagwell. There is, uh, two minor amendments to the, to the lease agreement on page six, paragraph 16, item B. Near the bottom of, uh, that sentence, we're deleting where it says, it's officers, employees, agents, and then it says servants, employees and customers. That item is being deleted. And then after the word or employees, we're adding the term where related to this lease and then proceeds with the rest of the sentence, any breach or default by the tenant, performance of its obligations under this lease, et cetera. And then on page 11, on the signature block, there's changing the word airport to the word landlord. And that is the subtotal of the changes.
Any questions? One second. Can you please call out the first section of the correction again?
No, I got that.
Oh. The second one was landlord for the signature line.
Correct. Delete airport and change to read landlord. And then on page six, paragraph 16, item B.
Right. Okay.
About halfway down in that, it has a sentence that begins with, well, it's a run-on sentence, but, uh...
Yeah, we got that one. We got the run-on. I think we missed the, uh, easier one. So.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Do I have any further questions of Mr. Moen? If not, I'll accept a motion. Supervisor White?
I move to approve. I move to approve the lease agreement as presented with the changes Mr. Moen alerted us to.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the lease with the corrections from Mr. Moen noted on the record. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you very much. I'm great, yeah.
Uh-huh. You too. We're going to move on to item 16A, which is discussion and possible action regarding an amendment to our internal audit services with Ida Bailey. I'm going to, uh, make a disclosure and then turn the mic over to our mayor pro tem, uh, Mr. Giomi. NRS 281A 420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. My son works for Ida Bailey. Although he does not currently have any direct involvement in Carson City audits, as an employee of Ida Bailey, the benefits he receives may in general be impacted by the awarding of contracts to his firm. Therefore, the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my position may be materially affected by this relationship. As such, I consider this to be a disqualifying conflict and I will not be voting on this matter. Supervisor Giomi?
All right. Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. So, um, I just, uh, wanted to, uh, have Sheri just do a brief 30,000-foot overview as to why we're doing an extension and the benefits of doing that in relationship to the other, um, audit component we have going.
Sure. No problem. So, um, Ida Bailey is our internal auditor. Three years ago, we went out to bid at the very same time for both external and internal auditors. And we had, I don't know, six or seven proposals to look over, analyze, review. We did interviews. It took a very long time to get through that process and select the two different audit firms. So the idea here was to extend this an extra year in order to stagger the two contracts so that we're not doing two contracts in the same year.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor White, you had a question?
Thank you. Uh, not to get ahead of ourselves, but our next agenda item also deals with an audit company with extensions. Uh, one-year extension. So I'm just curious, going forward, how are we going to avoid this coming together again at the same place? I mean, it seems like every one of these contracts do that. So we're potentially right back in the same place at the end of these next contracts.
Um, so Ida Bailey is, um, extending for one year. So next year, we'll go out to do an SOQ for them. The contract before you with the Hinton Burdick, that's a brand new one and it'll be for five years. Three years with an extension, we can choose to keep them for an extra two. So we're not doing then two in the same year. That's the goal is to stagger them.
And I think that, that the issue is, and maybe this will answer your question Supervisor White, is the work that's involved in doing the initial statement of qualifications versus just doing a one-year renewal. A one-year renewal doesn't require the extensive staff work, um, to review the documents because they've already been reviewed. You're just doing a renewal of, of an already established... You're just doing a renewal of, of an already established qualified entity.
Right, so I'm not opposed to this one-year extension, but when I sit down and look at the calendar, I can see how this is leapfrogging, and we're going to be back in the same place potentially again in the future. So if what we're trying to do is avoid this, having these extended projects for staff doubled up on themselves, we need to, staff needs to figure out a way to literally put a roadblock in front of that happening, if that's what your full intention is.
That's, that's my goal.
Yeah, that's exactly what this does.
Yeah, next year, when we do the SOQ for the internal auditor, we'll do the same with three two-year extensions, so we'll never be doing the same thing in the same year.
I understand it does that for this cycle, but as these cycles continue to roll, we're going to be back here again.
Hey, any other comments? All right, entertain a motion.
I move to designate Hinton Burton CPAs and advisors as Carson City's audit firm for fiscal year 2020.
Wait a sec, that's the next agenda item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We are on 16A.
I move to approve the amended.
I second.
And a second, all right. All those in favor of approving the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries.
One abstention.
One abstention, thank you. For the record, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Giomi, I appreciate that. We're going to move on to item 16B, which is the, regarding the recommended designation of Hinton Burdick CPAs and advisors as Carson City's audit firm for fiscal year 2021. Does any member of the board have a question on this contract? Supervisor, I see none. Supervisor Giomi, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move to designate Hinton Burdick CPAs and advisors as Carson City's audit firm for fiscal years 2020, 2021, and to approve the contract as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second for the approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you again, your staff, for the hard work of putting out bids. They're complex, so thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to agenda item 17A, discussion and action on an economic development application. Mr. Haskins is here, and Ms. Paulson, I'll just let him go. Yep. Mr. Haskins, you want to take us through this item, please? Thank you. It's good to see you.
Good to see you too. For the record, Andrew Haskin, Deputy Director of Northern Nevada Development Authority. I'm here today seeking a letter of acknowledgement for Redwood Materials and their application to the Governor's Office of Economic Development for economic development incentives. This is a great company. We've worked with them in the past. We helped locate them here in 2018. I believe they had two employees at that time. They now have 60 currently, and they're looking to add another 39. They've gotten, they've received a lot of national and international recognition. For those of you not familiar with the company, they have developed a new process for recycling consumer electronics. So it's a really great addition to Carson City and look forward to supporting their, their expansion.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Haskins?
Where are they located?
They're located off of, over in the industrial park by the airport. Yeah.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. For me, this particular item is a question of philosophy. I think that providing special advantages to privileged companies is an insult to our founders, who wrote extensively in opposition to creating a caste society. This is simply not a vision that our founders would endorse.
Thank you. I will acknowledge that I actually took a tour just like two weeks before the pandemic really came in. It's really quite the operation, and if any of you have an opportunity to tour that facility, I think you would be quite amazed at what they do and their expansion, what they'll do with your cell phone when you drop it into a container, and then the processes that it goes through for them to extract and not have waste of your electronic devices is amazing. So I recommend that if you have an opportunity, call them up and, and take a tour, because it's really quite phenomenal. Just to.
Do you think we can drop some of these microphones into that bin?
Be right. At one point, I'd even thought of asking him to do a project for us, because I don't think the community, and maybe that kind of even goes with other things we talked about earlier today, that we have so much in our community that no one is aware of, but that they could hold an event, because I'm willing to bet there's a bunch of cell phones that people have in their homes that they're not using anymore that could get recycled. So the purpose here is an acknowledgement of the application. It is not that we are approving or disapproving. It just requires that the local government be notified that they have applied. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. The GOAT Board will.
Make the decision on funding issues. Okay. If there's no further questions, Supervisor Giomi, a motion?
I move to acknowledge the application and authorize the mayor to sign the letter of acknowledgement to GOAT.
Do you have a second? I second. I have a motion and a second to acknowledge the application. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed, say no.
No.
Let the record reflect, the motion carried four, yes, one, no by Supervisor White. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you. And if anybody would like a tour, please reach out to me, and I'd be happy to work with the company and set that up.
Thank you again. Okay, we're going to move on to item 17B, which is a discussion and action for a resolution to create a subcommittee for the review of the zoning and development standards. I think I'll take you a little bit through this. As you know, we're working on all of our rewrites to Title 18. Mr. Plummel has received comments from workshops from the Planning Commission and from this board, and is in the process of working with Mr. Yu to do that rewrite that we've been working on. This subcommittee then would take another opportunity for the public and for both boards to have like a, an additional opportunity to make sure we didn't miss anything, that all of the thoughts from both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors were addressed. And so we're going to put the pedal to the metal for Mr. Plummel to bring this committee a proposed, of course, I think that goes to Mr. Yu too, sorry, because anything we push him, we're pushing you to, to bring this committee together again for a great additional public comment period. So do I have any questions, Supervisor Giomi?
So is the intent to stop the process that we've been going through and have this be in its stead or finish the process?
This is the finishing touches, and then it would come to the board, this board for first reading. It gives the public, like we've been doing the workshops before we go to first readings, that's really setting this same stage, that the public gets one more chance to say, did we miss something on a permitted use, or should we have made that a special use permit? Or, and then it would, then it would come for first reading. So it's.
So on the, so Mr. Plummel would bring back, because there's still two or three items, if I'm not mistaken, that we have not yet reviewed, that the Planning Commission is either started to take up or finished taking up, that have yet to come back to the board. So those would still come back to the board. I believe parking signs, there's a third one that's landscaping.
You can come up, yeah, we have just a few left.
So parking signs, landscaping have either been reviewed by the Planning Commission and have yet to be reviewed by the board, but that would still happen. Is that what you're saying? And then, once all those reviews have been done, and those comments have been put into a draft format, this body would meet, take additional input, and the document that's produced as a result of that would then go to be drafted into ordinance forum by the DA's office and Lee, brought to the Planning Commission for, for recommendation, and then brought to the board for first reading. That's the process you're.
Very close, other than it's a draft, actual draft ordinance, that, that's going to come, and then from this committee. They're, they're already going to have done the first round of put it together, and then take it to the Planning Commission as a whole to recommend to us, and then.
So I guess my question would be, I don't understand why we have to create another committee. Why can't we just hold one extra Planning Commission meeting to do the same thing? Or, better yet, why don't we hold one very specific joint Planning Commission Board of Supervisors meeting for the express purpose of reviewing that draft? Instead of creating something that is brand new, why not just use the bodies that exist and do one very specific focused meeting? Maybe on a Saturday where we have enough time to go through it.
So I will.
I'd be more inclined to do that than approve this.
Put him on the spot with Mr. Yu, because I did suggest or look at that very thought process that we would have a joint meeting, but I think there's some technical, some technical issues there. So if Mr. Yu would like to address that? Now that I'm putting him on the spot.
No, thank, thank you for that question, Mayor, and Supervisor Giomi. You know, with respect to the question of whether or not it would be more appropriate to have a joint meeting of existing bodies, you know, that is something that we had considered seriously, and I had discussions offline with the mayor, you know, about perhaps having a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and of this body for that very purpose. I, I think I have identified a number of logistical issues, none of which would be, you know, a complete obstacle, you know, or nothing that, you know, that, that we would not be able to overcome, but just some of the considerations we had, for example, is, you know, what is the nature and the makeup of the membership of the Planning Commission, which those members comprising that body are appointed by this body, you know, the supervisors. And then really what you have is a combination body, a hybrid, where you have, you know, it's probably not the right term here, but, you know, an elevated or subordinate, you know, type of board that normally would come to this board on matters of appeal, where this board exercises final authority, and in addition to that, also has the appointing authority, where perhaps the standing of the membership of the two different boards in a joint type of a hybrid board for given a temporary purpose would be a little bit awkward. So it's not with respect to whether or not certain members of this board would exert leverage over or influence in an entored manner, you know, a composition in a hybrid setting, but it does certainly present some optics, and it does certainly present some logistical issues. In addition to that, however, for purposes of the open meeting law, taking minutes, producing minutes, that's always been an issue of concern when it comes to joint meetings of separate bodies that exist in permanency, because, you know, we have certain statutory requirements when it comes to introducing those minutes, adopting them, certain timeframes, and there's always a question of, do you do that through the clerk recorder's office as a combined minutes package or, or those separate minutes packages? We've had those discussions, and we have a historical practice of doing that, but it also does present certain logistical questions as well. I'm, I'm sure that there are other issues that the mayor and I have discussed, which I can't recall right now off the cuff, but those were, you know, some of the driving factors here to, to land on this recommendation of a separate subcommittee where essentially it would function the same as a joint meeting, because you would have members of both bodies on the subcommittee, and it would only be for a limited duration and for a limited purpose. And it would also sunset automatically, as written in the resolution, because it would not have to come back to this board for termination.
Okay, I mean, I, I guess I can see your reasoning in terms of the, you know, the sort of parent-child relationship. I understand that. I, I guess what I'm struggling with is just creating additional bureaucracy, and maybe that's not even the right word, but I, I mean, I don't want to restrict the public's input. I like the idea of getting and giving the, the public an opportunity to do it. I just don't know that this has to be the way that happens. I, I think it can happen with a special meeting of the Planning Commission. I think it can happen with an announced workshop by the professionals in the Community Development Department that could hold that over, over the course of a couple of evenings. I, I, I think there are other ways to do it. So I'm, I'm not a big fan of this. I'm a big fan of the concept. I'm in agreement with the mayor on trying to get this done and get it finished, so we can start moving ahead on trying to work on a master plan update. I, I just don't like this particular idea.
Just Deputy DA, you?
Thank you. You know, and just, and in response to that, I, I, I wanted to know for the record that, you know, as staff and as, 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 you know, board counsel and a member of the DA's office, you know, we certainly respect that perspective, and we're very mindful of that. I mean, I think those are very, very valid points, and perhaps not adding too many unnecessary layers to, you know, what can also, or what can already be perceived by members of the public as a bureaucratic process. I don't want to take the words out of the mayor's, you know, mouth, but when we were speaking, you know, one of the points of emphasis that we had discussed was creating really sort of a specific defined forum for purposes of promoting transparency, where you would have members of the public who would be able to come to one forum for this very specific purpose for land use and zoning matters. So there wouldn't be a question of, do I need to search through certain agendas? Do I need to, you know, arrive for certain meetings where I have to either wait for, or perhaps not be, you know, be able to participate depending on the timing of the agenda issue? And of course, a lot of that could be alleviated by, you know, a joint meeting, or perhaps, you know, a special workshop or something to that extent. But we also consider the idea of the semi-permanent, limited duration, limited purpose, defined forum, where you really, really, you know, sort of open it up for public discourse with various members from two different bodies, which would help steer, you know, the issues, ultimately for presentation to both the Planning Commission and to the Board of Supervisors for a full, full-blown discussion prior to any sort of an ordinance draft being prepared. So hopefully that answers some of your questions, but I, I certainly understand, you know, your concerns, because I think those are valid.
You know, I, I guess in response to that, I would say that I, I think public workshops with, which this city has used extensively, particularly on design phases of road expansion, we used it for the South Carson Street design, where we did charrettes. You know, I think a public workshop specifically guided by, again, the professionals as opposed to the politicians, who understand the intricacies of the, of the document, as opposed to, you know, five members who will ultimately be a part of the bodies that approve it. I, I think it could be accomplished in, in the same way. But I, you know, thanks for that input, Dan.
Supervisor Jones?
Well, a couple of questions. Is this body going to review the existing draft, or is it going to just primarily do hearings, public hearings? And how much, how much additional time are we talking about if we establish this board?
It's going to review the drafts. The idea is, you've gotten comments from the Planning Commission, you've gotten comments from this board, and Mr. Plummel and Mr. Yu will be drafting from those comments, and then the public would see the proposed rewrite, and then these bodies would have a public workshop, a public meeting to allow them to come in and say, no, we didn't get it, you didn't understand us, right? So you could have the Planning Commission members or the Board of Supervisor members saying, well, that doesn't work, or they had conflicting, right? Planning Commission thought one thing, we thought something else. And so you have conflicting, and you could work with the public to do that, and then they would polish, I call it polish, from that, any final revisions to a draft ordinance that would then come to both bodies. Amount of time, I guess it's how well they draft. I, I can't, I can't say how much time it would take, because I don't know how much comment from the public there would even be on the. because I don't know how much comment from the public there would even be on the proposed. Mr. Yu?
Again, thank you for that, Mayor. And, you know, what I would like to ask of this board, just in advance of any sort of a motion taken on this resolution is, you know, a little bit of latitude, you know, that I like to reserve for, for not just myself and the DA's office, but for staff as well. As we all know, Title 18 and the appendix and all the development standards. I mean, there's a lot of information on the books right now and just as, you know, maybe by way of comparison and perhaps it's not a completely fair comparison, but City of Reno, I believe, you know, in, in speaking with Lee's, the community development director, it's my understanding that they've also undertaken a similar task of overhauling their development standards and their zoning and land use regulations. And for them, I think they've set themselves on a course for a four-year review and redraft process with the addition of hiring an outside consultant. So I think we're endeavoring, you know, to do this in about a quarter of the time without hiring any outside consultants and instead we're going to rely entirely on internal staff in the DA's office so that we can accomplish, you know, what I consider to be a pretty monumental, you know, objective here. So I, I would ask for a little bit of latitude and also the resolution as currently written right now does provide that flexibility where it does not say strictly here that here is the process from points A, B, and C where certain drafts at a certain, you know, time point have to be submitted to either body. I, I think that, again, you know, a lot of considerations were made in terms of what sort of language to fit into the four corners of this document. Another one which was, you know, should we have staff be a member of this subcommittee? And I think we landed on the conclusion of no, that would not be proper because staff, as we know, are not the adopters of citywide policy. I mean, that's left to the elected or the appointed officials of Carson City's different boards and committees and commissions. You know, what staff does is they help implement, you know, the vision and the objectives that are established by the city's elected officials and appointed officials. The district attorney's office, we make sure that all the legal lease is correct and everything is written in a properly enforceable and defensible manner. But as to policy, you know, you guys have heard me say over and over again on the record with respect to different agenda items, I will try as much as I can not to color outside the lines too much. And, and that would be coloring outside the lines too much with respect to a different sort of a makeup composition for this subcommittee. So again, you know, my point here is just to ask for a little bit of latitude because I don't know for certain. I think that's maybe perhaps one of the things we aspire to is that as one of the results from this subcommittee being in place, we would perhaps have drafts. But I would also remind this body that there are several, several opportunities to have drafts presented and for input, not only from the planning commissioners, but from this board as well because this board is vested with the final statutory and city charter authority to approve and adopt any ordinances. So whether we have preliminary drafts that might be generated from the subcommittee or preliminary drafts that are generated from after a meeting with the planning commission that's recommended to this body, or even if there are no preliminary drafts because, you know, perhaps, you know, we're, we're, we're aiming a little too high here, you know? And, and, and maybe we're on a really advanced, fast-track timeline where, you know, maybe we're being overly optimistic. We don't know. We've got our fingers crossed. But maybe it might be a situation where we come to this board for another final discussion and this board provides direction. And with that set of directions, we come back with the preliminary draft, which again, you tee up by going back through the planning commission before it comes here on final recommendation. So I just wanted to remind the board of, of the statutory process there when it comes to land use and zoning matters and how those ordinance usually kind of move up the chain before it comes here for, for final action. So, so that's, you know, I guess my really long-winded way of saying once again that I would just ask for a little bit of latitude before action is taken on this resolution.
Thank you. Supervisor White?
Thank you. For me, I, I like this approach because it does create an official record that I think folks can rely on as to what our intent really is as we move forward. I, I think we've seen in just the last few meetings that we've had, a number of people have a different idea as to what they believe what we have on paper means and how it should be applied. I, I think not only the private property owners, but the folks that work in the construction, developing stuff around our community need a more reliable resource that they can depend on. And I, and I think this does that while we in the past have used workshops. And that's a great opportunity because it's more informal. It, it, I think it really gets people to talk about what their opinions are better than a formal setting of, of a committee. But the end result is when the committee is done, there is a, should be an official record. This is what we mean. I, I would like to see the planning commission not spend till 10 o'clock at night going over and over on this stuff that has so much varied opinion in it.
Supervisor Jones?
I guess my struggle is, that's what we have a planning department for, to develop this. And I, I just see this as another layer that's not necessary. I just don't see what this committee will do that hasn't already been done. That's my concern.
Supervisor Giomi? And then we'll end debate.
As I, you know, listen to what Dan said, I, I, I guess what makes me most uncomfortable is that we as a board to this point have just provided direction to the planning staff. We haven't really voted on anything. So I'm, I'm concerned that a draft gets created that doesn't have direct authority, that's a wrong word, direction really from this body as the way, as, as that being the way we want to proceed. So what makes me, I guess, most uncomfortable about this is that things may get inserted or stricken at this body's level, this proposed body's level, that then become difficult to change when it comes to our...
Hey.
Hello?
I think she accidentally unmuted when she was talking to someone else.
Again, I guess, you know, if, if, I, I could buy off on this as a means to gain public input. If it happened after our board voted on a draft, maybe not the final draft, but a draft. So I guess that, that's my biggest concern. I, I'm not comfortable giving up this board's authority to have this body make changes to an ordinance that, I know they don't make changes, but they make recommended changes, that then get difficult to add in or take out. I don't even know if what I'm saying makes sense, but, but, you know, to, to this point, we've had a lot of discussion with Lee. We've given input to Lee individually. Some of that input has been public, some of it has been via email. We haven't voted on that. So this body could then recommend taking something out that I really wholeheartedly believed in. And I get that I would get an opportunity to put that back in. But, but at that point, we're so far down the road that, that the purpose of this body is almost meaningless because now I'm going to make a change that the whole group hasn't seen. So I guess, I, I guess that's my struggle. I, I really feel like we have a process in place. Adding another layer doesn't, it just doesn't work for me. I, I'm sorry.
Nothing to apologize for. What's the pleasure of the, of the board? Supervisor White?
I vote to approve Resolution 2021-R-5 and appoint Supervisor White to the zoning subcommittee.
Do I have a second? So I'll second it just for discussion and that we can have a, a formal vote. And so just on discussion, the, the Title 18 discussion is complex. And so I think all of the points that you've each made are valid. The reason, so I want to say I was approached by a member from the planning that it would be advantageous to really do this together as we discussed earlier about bringing us all. Because what happens is we're not going to necessarily get what you think anyway because the planning commission is going to make recommendations and this one's making recommendations, that it would be more advantageous for the public to have a joint opportunity for everyone to hear different points of view. So that was the purpose of this document is to give the public an opportunity to address both bodies at the same time. And then recognizing the relationship between elected and appointed boards. That's why we came up with the option of we could take three members from the planning commission and two from this board. And it's not to do final and it's not necessarily, it gets great minutes in which you would see all of the detail of why something was recommended or not recommended. So you're not going to lose, I don't think you're going to lose your history or your option to have something within it that you think would be erased and you wouldn't have an opportunity for correction. So it really revolved around the opportunity to meet with the planning commission at the same time with the public. That was the purpose of this document. And as Mr. White said, or even Ms. Shutey earlier, is I really think the public sometimes does, does not think we're looking out and, and listening. What I hear often is you're not listening to us. That's, it's not true. We are listening. And so that was what precipitated this, this idea. And, and again, it's just another opportunity for the public to come together. We don't have to do it, but it was just a, a chance to have two bodies deliberate. So Ms. Shutey, you had a comment on discussion?
My, thank you. My question or comment on that is, I appreciate the opportunity for the public to be able to sit down with both bodies. But in reality, it isn't in that if it's only two supervisors or three of the planning, those supervisors would speak from their perspective because of open meeting law and that they couldn't have, I won't, you know, a, a, a more unified voice or, or looking at perhaps the bigger picture or the direction of the spirit of this. So that's where I'm, I'm not really seeing how it can work in the way that truly a joint meeting could work. Because then truly you have the voices in addition to the public. I love the idea of public workshop. I love the idea of the dialogue and the back and forth and question and answer. I don't see this meeting that just because of the limitations of the numbers of people who will be participating on the board or...
Absolutely. No, I clearly understand. All right, so I don't see any more raised hands. So on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say no.
No.
Mr. Jones? Oh, thank you. So the motion fails. Two yeses, three noes. Supervisor Giomi, Jones, and Shutey. Thank you. Okay, clear voting. We're going to move on. No. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 17C, which is the action and selection process for the Carson City Treasurers filling the vacant position. Ms. Paulson, are you going to take us through this?
Yes. So Gail Robertson has tendered her resignation as treasurer and that will be effective on April 8th, 2021. Her NRS, the board is required to appoint a person to fill the anticipated vacancy for the remainder of her unexpired term. So this agenda item is for the board to select a process by which to fill her vacancy. Human Resources recommends the following process. And there is a change from your materials. We have, we are requesting to up, move up the deadline in the interviews so that the treasurer's office would have less time without having a treasurer. So we are thinking of posting the vacancy announcement tomorrow with the applications being due on April 9th. And then at the April 15th board meeting, the board would decide who they would like to interview. And then we would do the interviews at the May 6th board meeting.
Anybody have any questions? Supervisor Giomi?
Excuse me. Yeah, I just, I, I...
Lost your thought?
No. I've lost a lot of things. A step or two among them. So I, I just worry about the amount of time it's open, I guess. Do you feel like we're going to get quality candidates in that period of time? I mean, originally you were going to keep it open for a month. Was that the thought? So we're just sort of slicing that down. We're moving the open date a little sooner. And so it'll be open for three weeks then?
Right. Three weeks.
And I, I guess there's not much difference between three weeks and four, so.
The objective is just, like you said, to, to move it a little quicker so the office has a, has a treasurer. Exactly. Okay, any other, I don't see any other questions, so I'll take a motion. He's still lost in thought there.
No, I'm, I'm lost in microphone land. I move to direct the city manager to open the application process for treasurer and to follow the timeline read into the record here by the city manager.
Do I have a second?
And, and I will add, and the process, timeline and process.
Do I have a second? Supervisor White has seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. Motion carried unanimously. Okay, thank you. All right, we're going right along. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 17D regarding a business impact statement and proposed ordinance repealing the Shade Tree Council and to introduce on first reading a proposed ordinance repealing the Shade Tree Council. Do I have any questions from a member of the board? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Ms. Shutey?
I move to approve the business impact statement as presented and introduce the ordinance on first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, Item 18A, which is our item for discussion of legislation before us. Ms. Paulson, which bill are you going to do first?
The first bill I wanted to talk about was SB 156.
Okay, go ahead.
And this bill allows a hospital, not just a psychiatric hospital, to get an endorsement as a crisis stabilization center like the Mallory Center we have here in Carson City. This would open up the ability for more facilities to provide behavioral health services in order to de-escalate or stabilize a behavioral crisis.
There are recommended support? What's the recommendation?
There are recommending support of this bill.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? I'll comment just a little bit on this one. I did speak to our hospital staff the other day to discuss this and it really is a piece of legislation that our own hospital brought forward. I'm very interested in other locations besides Carson City having the opportunity to do Medicaid billing for these services. And so I want to strongly support SB 156. And so I want to strongly support SB 156 since we're the only regional, we're it pretty much for the, for the care. It would be most helpful if other locations could, could offer these services and receive payment. So I'd like to recommend we support SB 156. Any other comments? Okay, I'll take a motion on SB 156.
I move to support SB 156 as presented.
Aye, second.
A motion and a second to approve support of SB 156. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. Motion carried unanimously. Ms. Paulson, the next bill for discussion?
The next one is Assembly Bill 270.
Okay, thank you. Mr. White, do I have a disclosure on AB 270, please?
Yes, and I get to try to keep up with Mr. Giomi in getting this thing read here. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. Assembly Bill 270 revises various provisions of state law governing the preservation of the Nevada State Prison, and among other things, would allow the sale and consumption of beer and wine at any event held pursuant to a special use permit or agreement with the Nevada State Prison Preservation Society. In my private commitment, I serve in the unpaid position of Vice President of the Nevada State Prison Preservation Society, which is a nonprofit organization. Although I do have a fiduciary duty to the Preservation Society, my role as supervisor on this board has no direct relation to the Nevada State Prison or the Preservation Society other than to be able to advocate for a policy position on this state legislative measure during this agenda item. NRS 281A.420 also specifically provides that the statutory disclosure and abstention requirements do not require a member of a local legislative body, such as this board of supervisors, to take any particular action before or while requesting or introducing a legislative measure. Therefore, it follows that as a member of this legis, local legislative body, I am not required to take any particular action in advocating for or against any legislative measure that is being considered by the Nevada Legislature. I have conferred with our board council and have been advised that for these reasons, I am not required to abstain from voting on this matter. In fact, it is likely that I am not required to even make a disclosure. However, I am making this disclosure for the purpose of full transparency, but because I do not have a disqualifying conflict, I will be voting on a policy position with regard to Assembly Bill 270.
Thank you, Mr. White. Ms. Paulson, please take us through this.
All right. Existing law currently requires that the proceeds of a fee to use state land must be paid into the state general fund. This bill requires that the proceeds of any fee charged for authorization to use the buildings or grounds of the former Stewart, Stewart Indian School to be paid to the credit of the Nevada Indian Commission's gift fund for the purposes of carrying out programs to preserve and maintain the buildings and grounds of the former Stewart Indian School. It also, there is a Silver State Industries Endowment Fund, and this bill revises the allocation of money in the fund for the maintenance of the modern structures, buildings, and property of the prison and administrative costs of the Nevada State Prison, and eliminates the current prohibition on spending or transferring the reserve principal of that fund. Existing law also makes it unlawful to sell alcoholic beverages within one half mile of any institution under the jurisdiction of the Department of Corrections. This bill would authorize the sale or conception of beer and wine at certain events that are held at the historic structures, buildings, and other properties of the Nevada State Prison. There is also an endowment fund for the historic preservation of the Nevada State Prison, and that requires the money in the fund to operate, maintain, and preserve the historic structure and buildings of the Nevada State Prison. This bill eliminates the prohibition on spending or transferring the reserve principal of the fund and allows it to be used for the Nevada State Prison.
Thank you, Ms. Paulson. Does any member have a question? Well, that was easy. Seeing none, I'll take a, I'm going to guess, a motion in support. Everything we've been talking about today kind of seems to relate to it. These are just two wonderful assets in our community for an opportunity to bring visitors and everything else. So Supervisor White, you'd like to do the honors?
Thank you. I move that this board of supervisors support AB 270.
I have a motion and a second for the support of AB 270. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say no. Did you want to make a comment, Mr. Giomi?
Before we go on?
Okay.
I just wanted to let everybody know that Story County has issued a public position on the blockchain's BDR that is yet to come out, actually doesn't have a build number. And I think it's a well-written document, so for those of you who might be interested, maybe city manager can share that, but it's, it is a public document, and they've-
I think Lyon County did also.
Yeah. The one, I, I have not read Lyon County's, but I know, and we took a position as well, this body did, but the letter written by Story County and, and city manager Austin, I think is very well done. So I recommend you take a read at that. That was-
Okay, thank you. Let the record reflect, just in case I didn't get it out enough, that that was a unanimous support on AB 270. Ms. Paulson, is there any other legislation to bring to our attention, or?
No, that's it for today.
That's it for today. Thank you, Mr. Giomi, for that, and I would love to see the letter. We would all like to see that on the blockchain. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 19. Does any member of the board want any future agenda items or discussion here? Supervisor Giomi?
I was speaking to the fire chief earlier this week, just wanted to give a congratulations to a couple of promoted employees over there. They recently, or not recently, are going to be promoting Captain John Pedrini to Battalion Chief and firefighter paramedic Matt Cooper to captain. So wanted to give those two gentlemen, who I used to work with, congratulations. I also wanted to give you an update. Supervisor Shutey and I attended the Carson Water Subconservancy District meeting last night, and just a couple of items of note from that. We, we are obviously behind on water and are probably not going to catch up. It, you know, even if at this point we had a miracle march, it would, you know, it would be, it would be a miracle, or beyond. We're behind about five inches over the 30-year average, and from the all-time average, which is about 150 or 60 years' worth of records, we're at about 62% of normal, thanks to some very dry months, October and February specifically. And one item that CWSD is, is pushing, a bill that they had Senator Settlemeyer introduce was SB 98 that this body supported. It is the bill to add Story County as an official member of the Carson Water Subconservancy District, passed out of the Senate with a unanimous vote, and is now on its way to the Assembly where, where we anticipate that it will pass as well. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Supervisor Giomi. Ms. Paulson?
I just wanted to talk about the city's transition plan. At the Tuesday meeting of the State COVID Task Force, we presented an overview of the various components of our proposed mitigation and enforcement plan that we are developing in anticipation of receiving authority from the governor on May 1. The COVID Task Force was good with our approach and had no recommended changes, and this was just a high-level overview that we gave them. So our plan is to provide a narrative that will describe the city's approach to mitigation, management, and enforcement after May 1, and addresses the topics that are on Page 3 and 4 of the Roadmap to Recovery Transition Plan, and that was included in your late material. In addition, we're developing an easy-to-read matrix that will provide industry guidance to our businesses. The hope is to have that maybe just be a front and back matrix, easy to read. And so the plan is to bring a draft to the April 1 meeting for the board to provide any other direction, and then after that, we would submit our plan to the Carson City School Superintendent and the Nevada Hospital Association to receive hopefully their endorsement. And then the goal is to bring the final plan to the board on April 15.
Thank you. Ms. Hicks?
Thank you. I hope that you all had an opportunity to take a look at the public outreach postcard that was for our Bud I Way Affordable Housing Project. Just wanted to let you know a few things as far as the timeline, and we're really excited to see that things are moving forward. There's going to be a Zoom meeting that will be hosted in the next few weeks. We'll assist in pushing that information out to the public. So there's an opportunity for some feedback and discussion as a second element of public outreach in addition to what they've sent out so far. And then you will see that we will start to bring some items forward for the board's consideration. Our goal is that the development agreement will come forward either in April or May, but we might have an additional step prior to that in order to help them. They're going to apply for home funds, and so we need to determine the avenue in which they need confirmation from the city about this project and how the title would transfer after the development agreement. So there may be an interim memorandum of understanding. Right now, their developer is reaching, researching that and working with the home funds program to find out what would be required. So I just wanted to provide you an update and excited to see things are moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Supervisor White?
Thank you. It has occurred to me that perhaps a bit of clarification on my comments for 17A earlier today, my comments aren't in any way meant to disparage the hard work of the folks over at NNDIA or the hard work and the people over at Redwood Industries do. It's simply a philosophical standpoint that I'm coming from on that.
Thank you. Do I have any other comments then? Anything on Item 19? Nope? Okay, then we're going to move on to final public comment. Do we have anyone on the line?
We have one caller on the line. Caller, you'll hear beeps, and then it's your time to public comment.
Hello, caller?
Caller, it's your turn to speak. There's no other public comment.
Thank you. Then if there's no objection, we will adjourn. No objection? We're adjourned. Thank you all for a good meeting.